We'll call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the amendments of the August 23rd, 2012 Upshur County Commission Meeting.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, August 23rd, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Art Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner William Parker Administrator, I'm sorry, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Creed Pletcher Commissioner, William Parker Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklaw, her secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the amendments on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 16th, 2012, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the request from Tappan Squires and Mickey Tenny, Buchanan and Upshur High School Physical Education Department Representatives to use the Upshur County Recreational Park Pool Facility for the week of August 27th through August 31st to teach swimming and water safety. William Parker reviewed the request for Mid-State Soccer Club to use the Pringle Tree Park for practice on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. through the end of October. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the request, pending receipt of required insurance documentation. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the employment of Wayne Allen Kermings as temporary seasonal part-time maintenance and groundskeeping personnel at the rate of $8 per hour effective August 24th, 2012, as recommended by Greg Harris, Director of Facility Operations. William Parker provided an update/ status report on the establishment of Upshur County Appraisal Assessment Advisory Board. The Commission will follow up and review the tax assessment book for Union District. Mr. Parker was requested to follow up with Helen Phillips, Upshur County Assessor, to coordinate scheduling. The Commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, August 2012 status map for the statewide postal conversion. Number two, correspondence from Upshur Buchanan Health Department regarding raccoon rabies vaccination during August and September 2012. Agendas. Number three, agendas and/or notices of meetings, as listed. Number four, meeting minutes and/or financial reports, as listed. Number five, meetings, as listed. Number six, appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds, as listed. The Commission approved the following requests to attend meetings for Commission employees, as listed. On motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission reconvened into executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 at 10:30 a.m. to review applicants, applications, and resumes for the position of Assistant County Administrator. Present were Donnie Tenny, Creed Pletcher, J.C. Rafferty, and William Parker. The Commission returned to open session at 11:00 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved Megan J. Pomeroy as Assistant County Administrator. Effective date of employment is September 16th, 2012, at an annual salary of $32,500, pending satisfactory background check. Terry Joe Bennett, Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, reviewed before the Commission and reviewed a road name request from County Resident Donna E. Reed. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved Reed Lane for the private driveway off of Tallman'sville Road, as required per Upshur County E-911, Addressing and Mapping Orders. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission meeting adjourned at 11:30 a.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the amendments as read? Not on answer motion to be approved as such.
Same move.
On favor say aye. J.C. gets stage struck.
It would be nice. It would be nice, depending on the disposition of those in attendance, that we have as many citizens that are meeting every week, participating, gentlemen, if it is your government.
And we do have you today, and we welcome you. And we have a proclamation. Is Chris Carroll going to read the proclamation, or who's going to?
No, Rose Henline.
Rose Henline. Okay, Rose.
Good morning.
Good morning. You might want to bend the mic down so you can hear you. There you go.
Okay. Recovery Month 2012. It's worth it. Live well. It's essential to your potential. Whereas behavioral health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and is whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders. Treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas people in recovery achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and contribute in positive ways to their communities. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends and people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures. Recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas in 2010, 2.6 million people received specialty treatment for substance use disorder, and more than 31.3 million adults age 18 or older received services for mental health problems. According to the 2010 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help, and as whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery. In the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HHS, and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, SAMSA, and the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, OMDCP, and I invite all residents of Upshur County, West Virginia, to participate in National Recovery Month. And now therefore, in Upshur County, West Virginia, and the people of Upshur County, to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and meetings supporting this year's themes. Join the voices for recovery. It's worth it.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we approve? The proclamation is read.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we certainly want to thank all those that helped with this very worthwhile cause. And I think we want to get a picture, don't we? Each Commissioner was presented with this nice t-shirt. Erica Williams, the Hall, Overton House, Community Wellness Center. It's worth it. So thank you very much, from my half of all the committees, for their t-shirts. We have to have a break. This is called a break, isn't it?
Yes.
It's a break. I thought that was what I was talking about.
I call it a break.
Break. We'll call it a break. Okay. Moving right along, it's time for our next agenda item is Mr. Troy A. Brady III. But if you'd like to step up, we'll let you have the podium.
I will try to keep this short. After winning the Republican nomination for Upshur County Commission, I was approached by a person advising I was going to have the Hatch Act filed on me. They was wanting somebody else to file a Hatch Act on me. Eventually, they did file with the U.S. Special Counsel, trying to show me to be in violation of the Hatch Act. I have their response here, and I'd like to give you all each a copy of this, so you can have it for your files.
One for you, Creed. One for you, Don.
Thank you, sir.
Amanda, I'll give you one, since you called my house wanting to know if I received anything from that. Somebody must have came and called you.
And I'm not going to read through here. I'm just going to refer you to the second page here for the conclusion. It says, "Based on this information, we have concluded that you are not covered by the restrictions of the Hatch Act, and the Act does not prohibit your candidacy for County Commission. As a result, we are closing our file without further action. Sincerely signed, Erica S. Hamrick, Deputy Chief, Under Hatch Act Unit." One of the reasons I want to stop here today, that rumor is going around, you know what I mean? And it's been passed around, and I wanted the citizens of Upshur County to know that if they wanted to vote for me to be County Commissioner here, then I could serve, and there wouldn't be any problem down the road. Like to thank each and every one of you for your time. And if anybody needs a copy in reference to U.S. Special Counsel report, I have extra copies here.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next informant is at 9:30, and we've got just a few minutes here before we could...
Just as a follow-up, Commissioner Tenny, if I could. Commissioner Fletcher asked that I turn off some information as it relates to the Hatch Act, and I gave you, gentlemen, a copy of some publications that's available from the Office of Special Counsel. And unless you would have objection, I'll be posting this red little poster, Rules on Political Activity. It's just a brief 1-2-3 type statement of, you know, what state and local employees and federally aided programs may not, what they may not do. And then, as an insert, either this payroll check, probably next payroll check, there's another two-page pamphlet or brochure, political activity in the state and local employee by the U.S. Office of Special Counsel. And gives a little bit more information, some examples. So we'll be including that in everybody's paycheck, just as information. And then we'll be also taking a look at adding just, you know, paragraph in our Personnel Policy Guidelines. I'll rebring that to the Commission and elected officials during the policy review or policy meeting there, the second meeting in September. So just like to make you aware of what we're doing at this point to try and advise of some of our employees in the future if they have questions, or desires, or plans.
Okay, very good. While we're waiting for 9:30, time to roll around, we have some other items to consider. And the first is a considered request from David R. Rechter, Executive of the State of Dale F. Riggs, deceased for a reduction in bond from $2 million to $500,000. And we have a letter to that effect and explaining. Says, "As per our conversation, Executive of the State of Dale F. Riggs deceased, I am requesting the County Commission of Upshur County and your office issue an order, providing that said estate can reduce its bond to $500,000. The bond is presently $2 million. The assets being held in the state of July 12th, July 2012, do not exceed the value of $500,000."
One thing as it relates to, if the Commission so desires to approve the reduction in bond, it should correspond with the reduction in the assets being held in the state. So this letter mentions the 6th of March, which is fine if the assets of the estate are $500,000 or below.
As of that date.
At that point in time, if they were not, then it...
At what point they were.
At what point they were. That's, I mean, I understand the bond renewed probably on the 6th of March, but that's not the overriding concern.
Right. Okay. So based on that criteria, then, if it was $500,000 or less as of that date, then we will approve it, based on that criteria. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Same move.
I'll second it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Consider Approval of Software Maintenance Contract with PTS Solutions for $700 for incident software utilized by Upshur County Sheriff and the Buchanan Police Department. Would you like to elaborate on that, Mr. Parker?
It's a program that's been in place for a few years now. The Buchanan Police Department initiated the program, and the Sheriff's Department is just piggybacking on that, which allows for cost savings for both entities. And it's an annual maintenance contract that comes for review, and the amount is $700.
$700, an air portion of it?
Yes, that's our portion.
Okay. And that's just a renewal of existing. Okay, do we have a motion to approve that request?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Not on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Consider Change in Employment Status for Kimbra Wachog from full-time, need 911 dispatcher to part-time 911 dispatcher as of Sunday, September 2nd, 2012.
That should reflect Saturday, the 1st.
Okay.
She's on the schedule for Saturday, the 1st.
Saturday, the 1st. Okay. And she's wanting to come back to work part-time. We certainly welcome her. She's a good dispatcher. So I would ask for a motion that we approve that request.
Same move.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Consider Employment for the following individuals for part-time. 911 dispatchers, hourly rate of $10 an hour, with an effective employment date of September 16th, 2012. Joy Sanwall and Selena Jean Gooden. This is a recommendation, went through all the channels and came to us?
Yes, the 911 director, of course, received the applications from the advertising, conducted the initial testing and interviews, referred a certain number of candidates to the Enhanced Emergency Telephone Advisory Board, and they had their meeting this past week, I do believe, and recommend that these two individuals for consideration.
On that date, they'll start their training then?
Yes.
And that'll last for two months?
Normally it lasts, you know, three months or thereabouts. It varies, some with, depending on the experience or level of the individual. And there's a possibility then, since Kimbra has went to part-time status, one of these or another individual in the future may be going to a full-time status.
So will we...
And they were advertised as such, that they would be part-time and may lead to full-time employment in the future.
Will this bring us up to the full complement of personnel?
I do believe so, yes. It's just a matter of part-time versus full-time.
I would recommend.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Approved Letter of Support for Union Elementary School for I-Globe Innovation Zone Grant Proposal, Page 4, and we're asked to... For a letter...
Some request that we've provided in the past for them, an ongoing grant proposal.
So do we have a motion to approve this request?
Same move.
I'll second it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And it's 9:30. And we have Tom Lynch for Update on Recede of Governors Community partnership grant. Tom, come right on up to the podium.
I want to thank the Commission for allowing me to present our new information about what we're doing here in Buchanan with the arts. The Main Street Arts Cooperative is once again sponsoring the Main Street Arts Festival in Buchanan. It's our third year. And with the help of Representative Hamilton, we've been able to get some funding for this program. We've been depending on private funds to help fund the festival. We'll be having artists from all over the community, sculptors, painters, potters, weavers, woodworkers. We're all going to be on Main Street here. I have a little flag here with you, so you can put it on your refrigerator.
Okay.
Thank you. We did receive $5,000 for this year's program. It's going to be really helpful to allowing us to continue this worthwhile endeavor. The Main Street Arts Cooperative is an arts... We're trying to encourage the arts in the community. I know that you all understand the importance of the arts in the community, a vibrant community, really. You have to have the arts, or you're lacking a vital ingredient. So I'd like to introduce also two members of the Main Street Arts Cooperative, Ron Buckton and Art Valencia, who have helped out with the festival. Want to make any comments about the festival? Put the floor to him.
His art does it speaking for him.
Come up here to the podium, so we can...
Art and art.
Art for art. Art for art. We're really looking forward to this year's Arts Festival. Being the third year, we look to expand on last year's presentation and hope that this will be a continued success, and look forward again till next year's festival. This is going to be an ongoing endeavor that will hope leave a mark in the community and in the surrounding areas, and identify Buchanan and Upshur County as an arts community.
Are you blocking off Main Street between the courthouse and City Hall, like you have in the past?
Just one block. The Spring Street to...
Our ultimate goal is to eventually take up the entire Main Street, but it's going to take some time to get to that point. But we are growing slowly. And hopefully, in the next five years, we can expand to that level. Thank you.
Thank you all.
He will be here September 19th to speak about this implant. And it's an implant for heroin, for all opiates, for benzos. Explains everything in this brochure. It treats alcohol. It's for methadone and suboxone. We have 28 individuals in town right now that are clean from getting this implant. It's virtually impossible to relapse on this. It's a blocker. If they're even to try to get high, they cannot. It blocks it. They suggest that they stay on the program for a year, because it takes the brain a year to fully recover off of these drugs. And in the meantime, we want to work together as a community with 12 Step, with the Hall House, with U Care, because it takes a community to make this work. These kids, my son was one of the first to get the implant. He's a different child now. Completely turned his life around. So my goal is to save the youth, because we have a bad epidemic in this town. In the schools, it's everywhere. So we just wanted to let you guys know that we're starting a foundation to help families who cannot afford this. But we want to get the word out that he's coming to the high school to give his presentation. He's coming from Richmond, Virginia. It's going to be on the 19th. Like I said, it starts at 6 o'clock, and we would like the support of our community on this. He's coming a long way to speak about this. And I wouldn't be talking to you about this if I didn't believe in the program. I truly believe in it. This is all volunteer work on our behalf. But I think it's important. Our youth is our, they're our community's future. You know? And we have to reach adults, too, because they have problems as well.
What was the name of your foundation?
It's the Get Clean Stay Clean Foundation.
Get Clean Stay Clean.
Get Clean Stay Clean. So is this something that's very new, or...
It was, it started in 98. But the word is just now getting out. Dr. Coleman was an addict himself. He got addicted while he was in med school, and he came up with the naltroxone implant.
That's amazing. I tell you, that can be...
We wish it worked on meth, but it does not.
So what all, does it work on?
Works on all opiates, heroines, your benzos, like your Xannies, your Valium, the methadone and suboxone, which is not a good treatment plan, and alcohol.
And alcohol.
Yes.
That can be a very valuable tool in...
It's amazing it works on everything but meth.
Pretty much. Meth and marijuana. Yeah.
Well, that's something that the, I don't know, Willie, if the community correction program, J.C., you're on that.
I'm saying that might be something they want to discuss with them at some point.
Right. And they, we'll get the information to them about this meeting
I appreciate that.
And insist, insist that they have someone there to do this presentation.
It's really important. I mean, we found a program that actually, you know, it works for some, I should say. It's 94 to 100% success rate, if they maintain it for a year.
The counseling as well as the actual implant itself?
The counseling, they offer Skype counseling, which is what I have my child on. Okay? Because it's private, and it's like their own AA meeting, but it's in your home. And the counselor they have there was actually a youth pastor at one time. And he's awesome. The kids really relate to him. But we want to work with our community, too. You know? The Opportunity House, all of them, and we just need to pull together and help, because it's a disease. And with the heroin and OxyContin's, if you take OxyContin the way it is prescribed by a doctor, you can instantly get addicted to it. That's how fast it attaches to the brain receptors. These kids are smoking them, and they're snorting them. So it's even more addictive. And the opiates, they're calling perk 30s on the street, which is actually the new heroin. That's what they're calling the new heroin. I just want to get it out of our schools. I want to get it off of our streets. We have children, and grandchildren, and nieces, and nephews. And if it only takes one time of trying to be cool and fitting in to become addicted, that's sad, you know? Because that's not what they're meaning to do.
I can see where this would be a valuable tool when fighting that battle. And I know all the statewide meetings we go to, that, you know, because of the regional jail population and the cost of accounting on the regional jail. I mean, ours has been, last month was what, $60,000? And it did drop down to $50 some, but can you imagine? Upshur County, the regional jail bill was $60,000 per month. And, you know, all the talk on the state level is the regional jails are full. And if they, they know if they build another one, within just a short period of time, it's going to be full. And at least the focus now is changing to where, instead of just incarcerating people, whether it's alcohol, or drugs, or whatever, and not rehabilitating them, you, they're in jail for a certain period of time, and they come out, and they're right back in, you haven't, you haven't done anything but cost the counties...
Absolutely.
To lock them up. No rehabilitation. So I mean, I think this is something that...
They're not, you know, bad behaviors come with addiction.
Right.
You know?
And, yeah, that's right.
I mean, they do. People steal, they lie, they pawn, you know? And if they didn't have the addiction, they wouldn't be out there doing that.
That's exactly right. It's just that one thing leads to another, and...
And they're not bad people. They are addicted. They're addicts, and they need help.
Right. Well, we certainly appreciate the work you're doing, and...
Thank you.
Was very supportive of anything that's going to help reduce the drug problem, but more importantly, help the individual lives that it impacts, and the families that it impacts.
Absolutely.
It's sad, it's a sad commentary for America, really.
Well, I looked at my son. It was either death or prison for him.
Right.
And that was the road he was going down, and I wasn't going to allow it to happen. You know? And he's a brand-new kid. Last year, you couldn't get him to go to school. This year, he gets up, he's going to school, comes home, he does his homework immediately. That wouldn't have been him last year. His thought process was, how do I skip school tomorrow so I can get another pill? You know?
Right. And where am I going to get the money to pay for it?
Yeah, I'm going to steal off of mom, or grandma, and grandpa, or, you know? And it's not a fun, it's not a fun thing to watch.
Sure it's not. And what's sad is, is so many parents that don't know what to do, and all they can do is watch. That's what's sad. Dennis, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, two things. Can you announce that date again for Channel 3? And can you give me a couple of copies? I can put on a community board for Channel 3.
This is a rough draft, okay, right here. And I can get you... And I can get you the real one, because we have to reword a 501(c)(3) organization.
Okay.
We're seeking approval.
I see.
So that's a big difference.
All right.
We should hear back.
When do you think you'll hear? Because I'd like to...
I'll be at probably the original lobby today.
Okay. Well, I'd like to get this on the community board as soon as possible.
Okay. I'll, you give me your address.
I will. Absolutely.
I'll be one of them. Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay, why don't you announce the date and the place?
It is going to be at the high school in the auditorium on September 19th. That's a Wednesday. It starts at 6:00, and that's a meet and greet with Dr. Coleman. And then at 6:35, we're going to have introductions. At 6:45, he's going to speak, and at 7:30, we have questions and answers.
Okay. I would invite everyone to come out.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our last item is Review the Property Tax Books Before Consideration Established by Upsher County Appraisal Assessment Advisory Board Established Schedule for Review. And you sent out a couple of different dates, and the Assessors had a problem with one, so...
Yeah, later on during the meeting, we can take a look and make sure everybody's on the same schedule, and we can make that set.
Well, that's all we have on the agenda. Do you have anything else, Willie?
Our 7 o'clock joint meeting has been canceled. The city...
City canceled our...
Canceled that.
Joint meeting? Okay.
So that will not be happening.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we have paperwork and bills to pay, so...
Yes, we do.
Thank you.